Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Act.
I'd like to take a moment of silence. Thank you. The pledge of allegiance, salute to the flag, be it Donna, Commissioner Donna Pearson.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to read the roll call?
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Musso?
Here.
Commissioner Capazola?
Here.
Commissioner Saleo?
Here.
Commissioner Loz?
Here.
Deputy Director Romero?
Here.
Director Aubrey?
Here.
Do I have a motion and a second to accept and dispense with the reading of the minutes from the last public meeting?
Can move.
Second. Voice vote?
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you like to read the official correspondence into the record?
In a letter dated March 1st, 2023, Atlantic City Electric informed the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners of a notice of filing and public hearing in the matter of a petition of Atlantic City Electric Company for approval of powering the future, an infrastructure investment program and related cost recovery mechanism, BPU docket ER 22100666. In a letter dated March 3rd, 2023, the Ocean County Board of County Commissioners informed the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners of a resolution adopted at a formal meeting held on March 1st, 2023, supporting federal legislature in their fight to protect and enhance social security and other critical programs so vital to senior and disabled residents. In an email dated March 23rd, 2023, David Johnson requested that the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners and county administration reconsider Resolution 2023-206, authorizing amendment number three to the spending plan for the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, and the board consider an amendment to the most, to the spending plan for essential employees and receive premium pay at the rate of $13. Do I have a motion and second to accept the correspondence as read?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we're gonna have a presentation by Hassan Haml honoring Richard Richie Kates Sr. Is he present? Let's see, Hassan's not here. Would anyone from the family like to speak on behalf of Richie Kates? Or friend? Come on up to the, there is no like. So just state your name and where you're from, that would be good.
I'm Charlie Kakes, I'm the younger brother of Richie. And I want to thank you for inviting us to this meeting to represent our brother and to award him. This is a spur of the moment thing for him, so he wasn't really prepared for anything. We're happy to be here on behalf of Richard. Richard means a lot to us, to the family, to the community. He's done so much for family and he's done so much for the community. He was a type of guy that didn't seek public approval or public awards. He just went out and did what he did. And I learned so much from him and I tried to emulate him in every way I could. So I just want to thank you guys for allowing us, for allowing us to occur. I know Richie will be proud and happy that it's happening. His family, they're on their way, but on behalf of them, I'm here to speak. Thank you.
And I would also like to say something too. Mr. Kates was my football coach back at the Vile Midget Football League. And later in my life, I got to spend some time with him. I'm a teacher and when he was doing security at the schools. So great man, very respectable person, so I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you. Big loss for us.
And the other commissioner did.
Charlie, I make Richard back in this, Richie Kates back in 74, 73. I think he used to play for Sacred Heart then.
Correct.
And he taught you well, you weren't a capoeira.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so.
Wow.
He was my friend. I serviced all his vehicles. I got lots of pictures with him and customers. I always introduced him as the champion, champion was all his life. He dedicated a lot of time to the kids. I mean, he's, I guess that's why we got a couple of streets named after him. You know, for that good service he gave his count. And, you know, I remember being in the university in 79 and watching Richard Kate fight Kalindas. And he got him in trouble in the 11th round. And Kalindas was so sad. I mean, Richard Kate was such a nice-hearted person that he wanted the referee to stop the fight. And he laid off of him. And he laid, you know, not to hurt somebody, he wasn't able to put him away. But inside of us, he was the champ. He was the champ.
We should have said wait.
Exactly.
I was over in South America playing ball and somehow they found out, well, they knew that my last name was Kakes. So they put two and two together and said, are you Richie Kates' brother? This is way in Chile, South America. And then all of a sudden, they started to talk about how he won the fight, what a great fighter he was. And the next thing I know, they're bringing out these clippings for me to take back home to him. So he was known, not just in New Jersey, Cumberland County, United States, but he was known throughout the world.
He was.
Yes.
Any other commissioner?
I'd like to add two cents that I, how I got to meet Richie Kates and I'd not really meet is how through my grandfather, and I tell the story, my grandfather, my father, they didn't do a lot together, but they went to see Richie Kates fight. It's his night, they got together, they got, they went out because my dad always worked, my grandfather worked. That was the night out together to watch him. And I remember on Sunday mornings, I did, my dad had a paper route, bright and early, four o'clock in the morning. About six o'clock, we'd drive a certain place and there's Richie running. And I didn't, you know, I didn't know, I was really little, relatively little. It turned, and my dad would go, that's Richie Kates and he's training. And then later, I got to meet him when he was involved with PAL and different organizations they helped. That he always was, reached out and was always helping, always part of the community, doing their, that's a testament to who he was. And, and does people remember, you see the commissioners, what they remember, that he always participated and it was always a symbol, a person to look up to and be part of. And that's, I always remember my family also felt that way about him and proud that Dave's from Ireland. And it was nice, so, or they trained him on, I guess, so. So thank you, and I appreciate, do we, can we take a?
Oh, sorry. We would like to say something.
Sorry, I looked over here.
Since Charles Kates, Charlie Kates is here. I just listened to everything that you said and I'm kind of trying not to mush up here because I remember Richie Kates from high school and he would walk down the hall and everybody would pass out. Oh my God, that was Richie Kates! And it was just a total fan club there. Everybody was so proud of him. I can't express to you how it makes me feel that he is so appreciated and has been so appreciated. And it's, it's sad that we have to get to this point to say how much he was appreciated. But he had everybody's back, he was there for you, he did what he needed to do. He was somebody we all trusted completely. He said he was gonna do it, it was gonna be done. So you have our condolences, complete condolences. Some of us, it was just really hard because it brought it home that we were a part of that generation and he was one of our idols, you know? So my condolences to you and everything everyone has said about him, I don't need to repeat, but please know how much he was appreciated.
Yeah, I told him on many occasions, I said, you're my hero. So he knew how you guys felt and he knew how the communities helped him out. But he never showed it, you know? And I was talking to his wife, Gloria, she said, I didn't realize how big of an impact he had. And I said, I didn't either because he was nonchalant about it, you know?
Charlie, you can carry on his legacy. I know you can.
Well, I'm gonna try.
I know many people who know you.
Right.
As you know, and they think as highly as you as they do your brothers.
Right, appreciate that.
You can do it.
Well, I learn from the best. And I have 65 years and so I know that if I got one even to this.
Don't tell anybody how old we are.
Always the baby.
Chest-high me too, so, you know, he's kept me in line all these years.
And Charlie, I knew your brother probably around 15 years and exactly what Donna was saying. You know, he was the one that helped me, always was involved with the community, the youth, and I do a lot for the community, so always gave me good advice on what to do, so. Very, what a gentleman and a true hero, so condolences.
I just want to introduce my family that's here.
Introduce. Yeah, please stand up so we can recognize you too as well.
As soon as they found out about this, they said, I'm going, I'm going.
Glad you showed up. We'd like to make a presentation, just a small token to the family. Do you mind stepping up?
We'll just stand.
Charlie, you spoiled one of the highest championship in 75.
Calhoun County, it's a certificate of commendation presented to Richard Richie Kates Sr. In honor of recognition of life of selfless service, dedication, leadership, and excellence in the community and numerous accomplishments in Dora Lake and Dora Lake State Sport Boxing. It's not by each of the commissioners and we really appreciate it. You guys have really extended to you, you see, he's touched every one of us somewhat, which is a testament to him, so.
So he stood out then?
That's why he was humble.
Oh, wait, do you have a tissue?
If you guys want to say anything more, let's say something.
I just want to say, I'm the oldest of the family. Now, it wasn't that, there wasn't that many of us. And I have two older brothers, older than me. And I have eight brothers, there was three sisters. And so we got knocked out of position now. I'm the oldest because the other two passed. And then there was one under me, he passed, and then Pearl, the things to Richard. And I always tell everybody, I was the most fun in that fight.
Voice vote for you to read by title. All right, the next we're gonna, we're gonna do, talk about the county budget and tax resolution for 2023. And Jeff Ridgway, Jeff will make it.
Yeah, I just want to provide some comment on it and some context. So the way the process is, and I hope everyone can hear me, okay?
No, come on up, come on up here.
Okay.
Is that okay? Okay. So I just wanted to say, so the resolution in front of us tonight is to introduce the budget. What that means is it's being introduced to the public for the first time. So we've attached the budget to the agenda, so everybody has it and then they're able to review it. We're gonna have the public hearing on the budget with the presentation at the April 25th meeting. So just a little bit of idea on what this process looks like for this resolution. There's gonna be a motion by the board to vote on it by title only because otherwise then the clerk to the board would be reading the entire budget. So she reads just the title of the budget resolution. They vote on that and then they'll do a roll call vote to introduce it to you formally. That's, in no way shows that they're unanimously in favor of this. It just introduces it to the public and we can initiate the process. So while there is a public comment on this resolution, it's really just for the content of the resolution, not for like any comments on the budget yet because then I haven't been afforded the opportunity to give a presentation on it. And between now and the public hearing, I have to go through a process where the state examines the budget and some things could be tweaked between now and then. So there is a budget amendment process between now and the public hearing. If anything should come up, that's why the presentation isn't tonight. Otherwise, it would make more sense too because now everyone sees it for the first time. But I just wanted to give context to that just for the board when they are making the votes and then also for the public when they're seeing what's happening and understand what the process is for the April meeting, so.
And you're available for questions during this period of time?
Yes. Yeah, I think my number is on the county website, but if you can grab me after the meeting, that's fine too. It is, yeah, this is lively broadcast, bachelor party weekend.
Nice job. Thank you. Okay, you would like to?
I need a motion and a second to introduce the calendar year 2023 county budget to be read by title only. Voice vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2023-184, resolution introducing and approving the calendar year 2023 county budget and notice of public hearing. The calendar year 2023 budget provides for $177,501,943.06 budget with $103,700,000 tax levy. Most important, this is not a vote in support of or in disagreement with the budget. This vote is to introduce the budget to the public for the review and consideration in advance of a public hearing. Now, do I have a motion and second? For the public to open?
Second.
Voice vote?
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Want to read the notice?
Okay, now can I have a motion and second to close public comment?
Wait, aren't you?
We didn't open.
Oh, I thought you opened it.
We did.
We opened it, that was the first, that was the first.
Just open it for the public, you wanted to comment on the resolution.
So what's, you want to open it to?
Not on the budget, so.
For the budget.
Just the resolution.
So do you want, we want to open it to the public first?
We already just did.
Just did, okay.
Now we're gonna close it.
Anyone want to make a comment at all? Okay, could I have a first and a second to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion, second.
All in favor?
Now I need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2023-184. Roll call?
All in favor? All in favor? Oh, there's a roll call.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Notice is hereby given that the budget and tax resolution was approved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Cumberland on March twenty-eighth, 2023. A hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be held at the Cumberland County Courthouse, sixty West Broad Street in the city of Bridgeton on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, 2023, at 6:00 PM, at which time and place objections to said budget and tax resolution for the year 2023 may be presented by taxpayers or other interested persons. The budget will be posted on the county's webpage within a week of introduction.
Just to make a comment real quick, that we held the levy to the budget exactly the same as the year before, so no increase, we just kept it as constant as we could, so that's part of that budget process. All right, the next?
Do I have a motion and second that the ordinance be read on first reading by title only?
I'll make a motion, second.
Voice vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Bond Ordinance 2023-1, bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the county of Cumberland, New Jersey, appropriating $6,400,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $6,080,000 bonds or notes of the county to finance part of the cost therein. Do I have a motion and second for the bond ordinance on the reading and second for the?
The second?
Roll call? Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Notice is hereby given that Bond Ordinance 2023-1 was introduced and approved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Cumberland on first reading on March twenty-eighth, 2023. It will be further considered for final passage after the public hearing thereon at a meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to be held at the Cumberland County Courthouse, sixty West Broad Street in Bridgeton, New Jersey on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, 2023, at 6:00 PM prevailing time, at which time and place comments and objections to the Bond Ordinance 2023-1 may be presented by members of the public. During the week prior to and including the date of such meeting, copies of said bond ordinance will be made available to the general public who shall request the same at the office of the clerk to the Board of County Commissioners, 164 West Broad Street, Bridgeton, New Jersey.
Again, that part, as you can read, is our standard. We raise the bodies for the capital, our capital expenditures. We try to stay around $6 million each year as a balance to continue to roll over by things we need to purchase. Stuff gets put away, stuff gets purchased, our projects, that this money we put aside to do that stuff.
Do I have a motion and second to open public comment?
Second.
Capazola?
Second.
Voice vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that, the ordinance we just, the, we just passed, the resolution we just passed, does anyone want to make a comment about them?
This is public comment for anything.
Oh, comments, this is over?
For the resolutions.
Okay, the resolutions, any thought, has comments about the resolutions on the agenda today? Come on up, state your name, and they have five minutes, and where are you from?
My name is Dave Johnson, I'm from the city of Millville, and I want to thank you, the commissioners and county administration, for receiving my letter on the request of premium pay. Tonight, I just wanted to come forward so you guys wouldn't recognize who I was, and I'm sure you've all received the emails and my correspondence. I thought it was very important that the county review the premium pay for the essential employees of Cumberland County. I've been trying three times now for the county and the commissioners to review premium pay from the American Rescue Plan. It was well-written, county received $29 million for that, and they have used the money in various areas, and premium pay was never included for the essential employees who worked during COVID. I just wanted to bring forth some of the departments that had to work during COVID-19, and I'm gonna read them off. We had Cumberland Area Transit System, we were in the community, out servicing the community during the whole time, taking sick people to hospitals, to doctors, to dialysis. We had the Office of Aging that signed a petition, the original petition that was written to receive premium pay was in 2021. We had Public Works, Buildings and Ground, the Motor Pool, we had the Road Department, Traffic Safety Engineering, the County Clerk's Office, Maintenance Repair, the Health Department, Community Service, Nursing, Waits and Measures, the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office, and the Mosquito Department all signed the petition. So I'm representing basically 178 employees that signed a petition, and I would like to use to consider sitting down, discussing the premium pay on next month's agenda, and I would ask that I be included to come in and listen to the discussion on premium pay if you decide to look into it. Appreciate your time.
Sure.
And I also wanted to thank you guys for, in the last meeting, you recognized the gentleman who spoke on being recognized as a veteran for the Agent Orange, I wanted to commend you on that, and I hope that they receive some type of recognition. Thank you again.
Mr. Albrecht is? Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name and where you're from.
Bermuda's, I just came up because Hassan made it, so he's gonna say something, because he's one of our professional fighters from Cumberland County as well, so.
We had the families, so come on up, we were waiting for you. Just state your name for the record and where you're from.
They called your name, and I said, "There's no way that handsome man's in here."
Hey, you like this haircut?
You can adjust the.
Can we adjust the mic?
I apologize, my daughter was broke down in the middle, it was spooky, and filled up, and I was navigating AAA and her hysteria at the same time. So I had to apologize for that.
Apology, yes, sir, it's important.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about, very close friend, more like a brother than anything else. I'm not quite sure, his story is well documented, to say at least. I remember a time that, I don't know which organization was honoring, but me and Donna both had the opportunity to present, you know, say words about him. Talked about her being his hero and the like. I met Richie at eleven years old, and as I began my own boxing journey, and with that, I was enamored and fascinated, factuated, anything that you could be about a person who was a superhero at a very, very, very young age. I think when you measure Richard Kate's popularity, kind of like you do the dollar inflation, you know, a hundred dollars, a thousand dollars years ago was probably ten, fifteen thousand dollars today. Well, Richie today would be Floyd Mayweather, and Muhammad Ali, and things of that nature because of the popularity. I think that when you understand the magnitude and the width and breadth of what he represents to, not only to the African-American community of Cumberland County, but also to the county in general. I mean, we're talking about cross-racial appeal, talk about love, admiration, he's the epitome of it. And I'm so thankful that we've had the opportunity to be blessed with an individual who was selfless, and who gave so much to his community, and not only of his physical self for entertainment, but also for his clout, his business names, to whatever cause it was worthy, for the advancement of Cumberland County in general, its sports, its politics, the jobs, situation, everything that you guys represent. So you couldn't have honored a better, more worthy individual for, to represent what is good about Cumberland County and what it is. Thank you very much. His family loves you, they respect you, they respect, they're honored by this award. His wife couldn't be here, she had prior engagement, and among other organizations, this, you know, this goes on and on, the people who are wanting to recognize the greatness that he has done to our community. He's a beacon of light, a role model, a trailblazer for us, and I am so blessed to be here, and so thankful for you. I'm sorry that I, again, didn't have the opportunity to be here at the initial outset, but I'm thank you, thank you for the opportunity. I've worked with some of you guys before in other areas, and I know what y'all do. I know it's not an easy task to carry the burden and the shoulders of the goals and aspirations of our citizens on your shoulders, I think it's not easy. And I thank you all, and I'm sure he does, and it doesn't take lightly. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share. Again, apologize for leaving.
No apology. We appreciate you coming out to make a few, have a few words.
Baby thirty-seven-year-old. But I can't, you know, he spoke those words so eloquently and so spot-on. Just to give you, for those who've been a long time Cumberland County citizens, might know my dad, but some of those who are introduced to him, it was only one Richie Kates. He was one of a kind, I'm not just saying that just because my dad, I won't be biased by that opinion, but coming across being one of the most disciplined people. I got a chance to know Richie Kates, the person, because after, he retired at thirty years old, which is relatively young, you can start back from sixteen, but I got a chance, and I was born eighty-five, he retired by eighty-three. So I got a chance to see discipline well after that, and he used boxing to, he used boxing as kind of like a vessel to take him to the next level. God had a certain anointment on him, and that was to help touch people, right? For thirty-plus years, probably more than that, he was, you know, volunteering at the PAL, and was doing that free of charge, of course, you know what that is too. He just used that just as a way to get him to the next level, because, you know, he was well-involved in the politics, well-involved, the community, so many different things that he just was into, just kind of poured himself tirelessly, always just trying to help greater good of everybody within Cumberland County, you know, he gave his life for that, and he just was big on just kind of just being better. In life, you're gonna come across people that have certain missions, right? And I knew very early that I was gonna share my dad with the community, sharing with so many different people because of the voyages he was on as far as, you know, just using boxing, and using sports, and then later on, you know, in the church and so on and so forth, just to touch people, right? You know, God worked through him, and he, you know, even to his dying days, he's still was such a disciplined person, I never even meet anybody even more disciplined. He's a guy that got up, you know, five, five o'clock in the morning, "Well, go ahead," maybe he'd drive all the way to Trenton, where he was working in Trenton, right? So after working in Trenton, he'd come back to the gym. He still had the time to be a great father, right? And then just to wake up and do it all over again too. But that just discipline, he always was that way too, and it's one thing that I learned, just going above all else, was discipline, hard work, dedication, you get wherever you want to be in life, and just thank you for, everybody for recognizing my father, and hopefully, you know, see you all some more, but, you know, and hopefully his name and legacy keeps ringing on through everybody in Cumberland County, you know, because he worked hard for it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to the consent agenda? We're gonna take? Close public, we're gonna close the public, do I have a motion to close the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go to the?
Cap budget resolutions.
Cap budget resolution.
Resolution 2023-185, resolution authorizing the county surrogates office to exceed the 2% budget cap for the 2023 county budget. Roll call, Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
I need a motion and a second.
Can I have a motion? So moved. You want to make the motion?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Loads?
Now roll call, Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-186, resolution authorizing the county board of elections to exceed the 2% budget cap for the 2023 county budget. Do I have a motion and second?
Second.
Roll call? Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-187, resolution authorizing the county board of taxation to exceed the 2% budget cap for the 2023 county budget. Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-188, resolution authorizing the county sheriff's office to exceed the 2% budget cap for the 2023 calendar county budget. Do I have a? Second?
Second.
Who moved? Who moved, okay. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yep.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes. The, we're gonna move to the consent agenda, but before we move there, we're gonna pull number eight, Resolution 23, 2023-196, we're gonna pull off the consent agenda, and we will go back to that, so.
Do I have a motion and a second to vote by consent agenda on Resolutions 2023-189 through 2023-229, except Resolution 2023-196? Do I have a motion?
So moved, okay, second.
Roll call? Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Do I have a motion and second to adopt Resolution 2023-189 through 2023-229 by consent agenda, except for Resolution 2023-196? Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Roll call, Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Now we're gonna go back to?
Gonna take a vote to?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read that first, wait.
We're gonna take resolution?
I'm gonna do the Resolution 2023-196, Resolution rescinding Resolution 2022-654, awarding a contract for 2021 TTF road program, City of Millville, Cumberland County, New Jersey, bid number 22-49, and authorizing the resubmission of the bid, number 22-49. Do I have a motion and second to table Resolution 2023-196?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loads.
Yes.
Commissioner, Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes, the, the purpose of that was that, uh, the, this, uh, we were gonna rescind the whole resolution, but by doing that, uh, we have to go out the bid again, and there's some technicalities that we think we could solve and we could bring it back on the agenda. There's a lot of paving programs involved that we don't want to waste more time, so we get it resolved, we will put it back on the agenda and, and just get going with it so we can pave the roads during the summer, the spring and summer, and early fall to get it done for it. That's why we did that, that way.
Resolutions, resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-three dash two-thirty. Resolution authorizing purchase of one Alamo eighteen-foot Samurai Boom, one Alamo Interstater seventy-four-inch RH, and one Alamo Interstater for use with John Deere fifty-ninety-five M tractors for the Department of Public Works. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loads.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-three dash two-thirty-one. Resolution declaring a twenty, two thousand fourteen Chevrolet Tahoe, Tahoe PPV, VIN number one GN SK two E zero-two ER one four one five three, asset number eighty-five seventy-three, as surplus and unneeded property, and authorizing transfer of title to the Cumberland County Technical Educa, Education Center. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loads.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Just have a question for a vote. The, on this, there's only some, I don't know, a hundred twelve, a hundred twenty thousand miles on this vehicle. Why was it designated to CC Tech and there's no other, I guess, the only one of...
It's not one of yours?
Do we know whose it is?
It's, uh, Sheriff's Department?
Is there someone in Sheriff's Department here? Answer, Sheriff, if you could step up. Just asking why it was donated to the CC Tech. It doesn't have a lot of miles. I'm sorry, my background is that this vehicle is perfectly good and so...
It needs a lot of mechanical work done to it.
Okay.
And, uh, they requested it, so.
Okay.
They're willing to put the money into it.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
They get to practice on it, right?
They get to practice.
They get to practice on it, right?
Yeah.
I have a question about that, though, is that, uh, that's not, that's not usable, though, once the tech, um, performs any work on it, correct?
Why would it not be usable?
I'm just asking the question, I thought it not a consurable.
What was that?
It's not smashed, right? It's just mechanical, so...
It's just, what type of mechanical work would it require?
I believe that might need a transmission, I'm not quite sure on that one.
And then once it's been, uh, rectified and, and, uh, handled and repaired, then is that vehicle still usable?
Yeah, they're gonna use it for their canine.
For the canine, okay, so it is usable, okay, very good.
All right, so I'll, I'll move, thank you, Sheriff, appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, so yes, so...
Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-three dash two-thirty-two. Resolution authorizing perp, purchase from New Jersey State Contract Vendor for one model DS six-five-I folder inserter with Impress Cloud solution for the prosecutor's office. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loads.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Right, I have a question for the prosecutor on it, you might as well come on up. So I, I read that this piece of equipment's gonna make you far more efficient than it is today. Is there, is there, the, the people to handle now, are they gonna be moved, could they, do they have enough time now to move to something else? That's how I read it, it was such a sort of...
So we have, we have a envelope folder now.
Okay.
But it's been, um, it's several years old and it's not supported anymore. So we're moving up to a more modern model. And, um, as I reported to you, we, uh, send out about four thousand letters per month. Um, we are attempting to get more and more people to switch to text or email, but some people still like paper letters. And because of the Crime Victims Rights Act, which gives a victim the constitutional right to be notified of all proceedings, we do have to send out these letters so that the mail-in cases are postponed. So this will actually save actual hands from having to fold and stuff letters. It's automated with our, uh, information management system, so the letters are printed out, stuffed in, and, um, that frees up employees to do other work.
It seemed real more high-tech with the program, that they were, it would also, when things are being sent back to you, it, it takes an accountant so that, uh, they didn't get noticed, that they would, it would be overlooked, is that...
Well, we will have the proof that we sent the notices, and that's really important, and I think Samfield's office, we went through some hoops, but, um, we were able to get this, uh, online, and I thank you for approving it.
All right, appreciate it, thank you. And, uh, yes, so, all right.
Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-three dash two-thirty-three. Resolution awarding contract for specifications for the twenty-two thousand twenty-three striping program various municipalities, Cumberland County, New Jersey, bid number twenty-three dash twelve. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loads.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-three dash two-thirty-four. Resolution awarding contract for providing student transportation services for the Wawa Summer Program for the Cumberland County Demarc, Department of Workforce Development. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loads.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Just a comment on this, we, we are, this program for three years, or this is the fourth year questioning this program, we, we have a shortage of people, uh, we need help in this county, and every time I ask a question about this, these people get a, they go down to shore, our, our kids go to the shore, uh, we pay for the bus, it's a great program because they get employed by Wawa, which is a fantastic thing, but I, I could go to any business in this town and knock on the door that need people, and it would be nice that maybe they would work here, or get a job here, because this is where they live, is here, and, uh, and establish themselves here, uh, and we're paying for a bus to send them to the shore. Uh, I, I mean, at one time, I bet, I, I probably was a, a great deal, because they're probably, but we're doing things here. Uh, uh, our economy's starting to move here, and our businesses are crying for people here. We spend a lot of money on workforce development, teach our kids, uh, we, a lot of programs that, to train our people, we have a tech school that, that, that helps our kids, uh, get better, even our high schools are providing services to teach our kids, and we're sending our kids to the shore. Uh, and I'll, I guess to be the harshest critic is that let Wawa pay for the bus, and we'll take the money and do something else with it. Um, it sounds kind of harsh, I guess, I guess I, I hear again that, uh, it's a program that works great, I'm sure it works perfect, but times have changed and we're continuing to do the same thing again and again and again. So my vote is no.
Yeah.
Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-three dash two-thirty-five. Resolution awarding fair and open contract for multi-model community transportation analysis for the southeast Gateway Neighborhood of the City of Bridgeton, RFP number twenty-three dash oh-nine. Do I have a motion and second?
So move. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loads.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Just a comment, or this would have been a consent agenda thing, and a positive comment, this is, uh, we're looking, and this is when we did our bypass from day one, when we walked here, I said, "Don't get bogged down," and we have bigger things planned for the southern part, the south end of, uh, Bridgeton, and all the way down to Fairfield, and all the way up to, uh, Mary Almer Lake. Uh, we, we are looking at this area, because we, we have committed to a park system through this county, and we believe that area along the Cohansi River could be a, a heck of a greenway, uh, uh, from the headwaters of the, of the Cohansi all the way up to, I say, Mary Almer Lake. That includes a zoo, that includes, uh, so, there's green acres land already there, we're not really doing anything, I don't want to take anything off the tax rules, I just want to roll, and right in the middle of that is the south, south Bridgeton, and that, and I, I see economic potential for that area, just because people, we hope people are walking, kayaking, riding bikes, uh, that's the potential we, we hope to see, uh, using the river as a resource, because it's here, and it's a, it's our highway, it's a highway that we have here, we have two of them, Morse and, Morse River and the Cohansi. So let's start looking at what it could do to make, uh, our economy get better, and, uh, so I, I just wanted to pull that out to share where we're going, and this is just one of those things, we, is a first step in that, and what I see is potential for this area. So that's what I wanted to get bogged down on, not a bypass, so, it's a yes.
Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-three dash two-thirty-six. Resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract, providing as needed general architectural and engineering consulting services for the County of Cumberland, RFQ number twenty-two dash fifty-three resubmission. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loads.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-three dash two-thirty-seven. Resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract, providing as needed general environmental consulting services for the County of Cumberland, RFQ number twenty-two dash fifty-four resubmission. Do I have a motion and second?
So move. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loads.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-three dash two-thirty-eight. Resolution awarding fair and open contract for providing consulting services for the Department of Corrections, County of Cumberland, RFP number twenty-three dash eleven. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loads.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-three dash two-thirty-nine. Resolution awarding contract for providing plumbing repair services for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System, identifier number one-eight-one dash C C C C P S, bid number twenty-three dash oh-six, resubmission. Do I have a motion and a second?
So move. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loads.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Just a comment, that the reason why we're doing this, we're taking our jail that we have now, and we're gonna, we are in the, right now as we speak, that we are, we are painting in-house, our painters are hitting the, the jail, we need plumbing, uh, uh, fixed, we're fixing the plumbing, that's why this, we're doing this, and there's a list of other things that need to be done, including elevator, uh, to make sure they're working, that is in the new part of the jail and the annex. It's part of our intermediate plan to have the jail functioning so we could, uh, bring inmates, uh, increase the inmates in that jail to get us, uh, out, we're, by June first, we're getting, uh, all our inmates back from, in whatever period of time, all our inmates back from Hudson, our contract ends, so we have to have a place to put them. Uh, it's not just in our own facility, but we are talking to two other counties, which I guess I could reveal that, because we're working towards it, Azosha, Azosha County it, Azosha, Azosha County and Salem. They're both, uh, pledged to help us. And between what we can house and what, uh, they're gonna do for us, uh, we're trying to keep the price low or that we're, we're bleeding and, um, or low, or low, uh, spend less because we could house more. And I thank the director of jail who's been very, very progressive and very, uh, uh, proactive with our, our business administrator and assistant business administrator working hard, our staff to make this a reality of what we're aiming to do. Uh, we have a deadline and I've told this board and we work it towards it, May 1st, is our deadline to be ready to go with the decision. And we're, the long-term decision will be made. And that's, that was the part of this, the one right before at the resolution to have a consultant give us the facts, give us the numbers so we can make an intelligent decision with what we know. So, thank you. And that's a yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 240, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in the litigation matter of Brown, Clark, et al. versus Charles Warren, U.S. District Court, docket number 1 colon 20 dash CV dash 7907.
Before we have a first and a second, I would like to make sure on each one of these, this is why we pulled off the consent agenda. I would just like our solicitor just to make a comment on one and then it's second, first and second from there. So the public knows what we're, why. It has been questioned many times why these legal expenses is gonna give you not details, but kind of a, uh, a cut answer because he can't fill us in all the details. That's a privilege, but we're gonna try to amount and where we're at. If that can be, I leave it to his tact on what he can say. So, um, this is the first one that we're reading. If you want to make a comment and then I would answer first and a second.
So this is resolution 2023, 240, and it is related to 2023, 244, same case, meaning there's, uh, multiple attorneys. This is a federal district court case where the federal district court appointed the firm of Fox Rothschild to represent a class of inmates against the county based upon, uh, conditions in the GO. This matter is proceeding. Um, it has been attempted to be settled several times. And at this point, I can tell you that there's been, um, recently, uh, some proposals relating to that that was circulated among the board. And I try to keep you all up to date. Um, I wish I could tell you tonight that it's settled. Um, and I can tell you that we're pushing it as hard as we can. Of course, with the help of your BA who has familiarity with these matters. Uh, we talk about this case regularly and are doing what we can to push it along.
Okay. Take a first and a second from?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 4, 241, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in accordance with NJAC 5 colon 30 dash 5.3 through NJAC 5 colon 30 dash 5.5 for workers' compensation matter of Amanda Wilmore versus County of Cumberland. Do I have a motion and second?
Before that, uh?
Sure. So this is a employee, form of a criminal county, back when Cumberland County ran the Cumberland County man. This is a couple of years ago. This is a, uh, back on a re-opener. So, uh, a claim of a related complication based upon an injury suffered. Um, I was not around the county when this case first came through. We do try to settle workman's compensation matters with a total release. In this case, clearly that was not done and that's why it's extant and, uh, working its way through the court.
Is, do you think this will be finished quickly? Like this, or is this gonna go?
It's still workman's compensation court matter. They tend to be tracked pretty quickly, but we do have to get to the bottom of the allegations and see how they're related to the injuries. And of course, it relies on, on evidence from back a long time ago.
Okay.
So, uh, I'll keep you updated is what I can tell you.
Can I have a first and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 242, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in the litigation matter of Todd Ford Jr. versus Warden Smith, Cumberland County, U.S. District Court, docket number 1 colon 20 dash CV dash 12655 and 1 colon 20 colon CV dash 8863 in accordance with NJAC 5 colon 30 dash 5.3 through NJAC 5 colon 30 dash 5.5.
Mr. Carr?
So, uh, the class action suit that we talked about back at, um, item, at resolution 2023 dash 240 calls for relief to the class. It does not call for relief and nor does it provide for relief on the basis of personal injury. So many of the participants in the suit that's discussed in 2023 dash 240 have made application and the judge has permitted them, uh, to file suits for personal injury based upon conditions they allegedly suffered in our jail. 2023 dash 242 is one of the participants in the class action suit that applied to the court and like more than 30 others have been approved to be appointed counsel at the public expense for purposes of seeking damages related to conditions suffered at the jail. We've managed to settle a couple of these. This one is not at the current numbers able to be settled and, uh, nor is the county able to set a precedent for the 30 some other suits that are ongoing at a high, at a, at a average number, right? So, uh, this one is going to have to continue to be litigated. It's being handled by the Lake Pama Firm, um, as is the, the underlying case just because it's a, one of the representative plaintiffs in the class action suit.
Uh, can I have a first or a second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 243, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in a litigation matter in accordance with NJAC 5 colon 30 dash 5.3 through NJAC 5 colon 30 dash 5.5.
Mr. Carr?
Sure. So this is an employment matter that arises out of, uh, the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office, um, where an employee took exception, uh, to the interpretation of the laws related to disclosure. Um, so in this particular instance, uh, this case is ongoing. Certainly if there's an opportunity to bring it to a close, that would be welcome to, uh, the county parties. But at this point, uh, we're in deposition, uh, developing information.
Can I, did anyone have any questions? The first and the second?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 244, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in the litigation matter of Brown, Clark, et al. versus Charles Warren, U.S. District Court, docket number 1 colon 20 dash CV dash 7907 in accordance with NJAC 5 colon 30 dash 5.3 through NJAC 5 colon 30 dash 5.5.
Mr. Carr, ask one.
Sure. Uh, so I referred to this back when we talked about the underlying, uh, class action suit and the way the information developed in this suit. Um, there was a potential for, uh, folks that worked for the jail to, uh, possibly give testimony contrary to the interests of, um, other jail employees. So there was a necessity to separately represent, um, some of them. And in this case, uh, this is a firm that was assigned representation of one of the officers at the jail, uh, that's in the middle of the litigation. Same thing, if we can settle the underlying suit, we can get this go away. Uh, but for now, we are only giving it to the state.
Uh, any questions at all?
I can state it then.
Yeah.
I, I
Mr. Saleo?
Basically, I just, I don't want to bring it to the public's attention that a lot of this is all, as the solicitor said, interminable. And it all stems back to the jail. It all stems back to, again, a previous administration not taking care of the situation prior to what we're actually now have inherited. We're trying to fix these problems, these litigations as quickly as possible, but we all know how government moves and how the law even moves even a little slower. So this is a difficult situation. We are moving forward. We're trying to correct the situation. I know most of us, all, back, all of us here have been on the phone continually with the solicitor, with the BA, what's going on here? What's going on here? What's going on here? So just letting you all know that this is not something that we're letting go very easily.
All right. Uh, do we ask for a first or a second or?
Do I have a motion and a second?
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Stay.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes. And that's, uh, for future, that's the format we'll follow to hopefully answer some questions of people that have why we're, why we're in this. And hopefully you'll start seeing some of those dwindle down a little bit as we solve them. We're always gonna probably have more, but, uh, we'll just try to, uh, answer some questions ahead of time as much as we could say. Uh, that's, Mr. Carr will determine what can be said about them. So,
okay.
Resolution 2023 dash 245, resolution rescinding resolution 2020 dash 556, authorizing the county administrator and county staff to proceed with layoffs as approved by the New Jersey Civil Service Commission. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
As a yes, and the, the, uh, the purpose of this is to set a signal to our, our, uh, our, our corrections officers at, at the jail to say, we, we are not going that path. That we were, we were informed that there, it was out there. Uh, we want to make it clear that it's not out there. It is rescinded and that they's, uh, were, um, civil services rescinded a while back. We're just following through on our own, uh, uh, rescinding of it. And it's to set a signal that we value what they do. Uh, we will need, uh, we will need more. Uh, we would like to go out and, and market that we are the, uh, we are in the market for hiring corrections officers. And we need, we were told that this is a signal we need to send. And our director will, will be, uh, uh, pursuing that. Our staff will be pursuing that. Uh, we will do it as we can, uh, budget being, uh, a part of that. But it's all part of a, of a process we're following. Both, all of us are following to make this, uh, uh, it's a necessary part of what we do. Uh, it's not what we want to do, but it's a necessary part of what we do. And, uh, and we're trying. So, uh, so a yes, so.
Resolution 2023 dash 246, res- resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for annual support maintenance for civil service support for the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 247, resolution affirming energy, emergency to exist at Cumberland County Jail and affirming emergency contract for repairs to the jail's emergency generator. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 248, resolution authorizing an involuntary disability application on behalf of the corrections officer, officer Yobani Marti pursuant to NJAC 17 colon 4 dash 6.10. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 249, resolution authorizing application to an agreement with the N, New Jersey Department of Health for a mini grant for the senior citizen farmer market voucher program. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
All right, Trezor's report time. Uh, we began the month of February with a cash balance of $41,843.14. And after a cash receipt of $30,184,156.38 in cash disbursements of $15,461,996.36, we end the month with a balance of $56,562,583.16. On the attached list, we have an itemized list of investments, which in total are $58,957,394.31. And then also, uh, there's a $200,000 CD that the clerk's office just got in addition to that balance. So with a motion and a second, you can file for audit.
Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Voice vote.
All favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion and second for authorizing payment of all salary and wages?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote?
All favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion and second to open public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Uh, if anyone has, uh, any comments, please come to the mic.
Voice vote.
Is this, uh, all favor?
Aye.
If anybody has anything to, uh, come up to the mic, uh, state your name and where you're from. And you have, uh, limited to five minutes. Uh, just only the back.
Look at there.
So, good evening. My name is Jessica Moore. I've been an employee for Social Services for the past 15 years. And I'm actually not going to speak about our contract this time, even though we don't have it. I'm talking more about the working environment within Social Services. For as long as I can remember, Social Services has been a place where you came, you started your career, and you retired from. Unfortunately, that role was long gone for many of us. We have seasoned workers that have been there seven, 10, 15 years, et cetera, leaving to find better jobs. And it's not for just more money. Many of us are taking pay cuts to leave that agency. I do agree that a contract would help, but you're still going to see many employees walking out that door. The working environment within that agency is terrible and it continues to get worse every day. We come in not hating the job that we do, but hating what happens within that job. We used to have an environment filled with happiness, camaraderie. We were a huge family. Many of you've had people that worked in that agency and that's what we were. We were a huge family. That is no more. That is gone. My fellow coworkers and I are requesting the help of the commissioners to help bring that environment back into our agency because it's gone.
Why?
That's what I was just gonna, Miss Moore, explain yourself.
I would like to keep my job for now. I have a feeling if I continue to talk, it might not happen.
Thank you.
I, I, uh, am more than happy to speak with any one of you.
Yeah.
Anytime.
Reach out.
To tell you a little bit more about what's going on.
Reach out.
Absolutely.
Is there, is there a group of you that, that?
There's probably more than just a handful of us that could probably speak. I invite you all to come into our agency and speak to the employees within the agency.
Who, who's?
See the change that's happened.
Liaison is Commissioner Romero and Musso are liaison. Would they, would you mind meeting? Would you guys mind meeting with them?
Would you guys mind meeting with us?
Absolutely. Anytime.
Normal wish.
But quickly, as I too have found other employment and I'm leaving that agency. So sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean Hock, upper Deerfield. Uh, I thank you very much for, uh, the lesson you gave us on the fees. It was great. I mean that. Um, not that we have to know everything, but it's nice to know a little bit about it. One thing that, that I would like to know more of is who, how, and why the new jail was canceled. Can anybody, I don't, I don't want it today, but I'd sure like to have it next time in the same type of format. Who, where, how, why?
Mr. Moore?
What is it costing us?
That we probably get answered, but we're gonna, that actually is, we, you can't say a lot, but you, we promised you would answer because, uh, we promised people last time we would answer when the, the, uh, the law firm we hired does, uh, sits, uh, does their motions. And once the motions, uh, are, uh, made, then we could, maybe we'll, we'll be able to answer all these questions, but we'll answer what we see, uh, what we've come up with, uh, because we will make it, uh, we will make that public. Uh, and, uh, it may explain a lot of things of actions we've ta, taken. A lot of the questions you just mentioned may be answered just by reading. But at this time, I don't think we can give you those answers, um, only because, uh, our, our, we actually, uh, our law firm has not filed all those motions, but they are doing it as we speak. Uh, Mr. Carr?
Carr?
The second we can communicate without harming the county position, we would, this body would love to talk more about it.
Mr. Hock, we are definitely sincere about this. What the solicitor is saying is correct. The legality, the repercussions that will result, that we were to give out information today would cause us to suffer on the illegal side of things. We just can't. So unfortunately, loose lips sink ships. And that's something that's very important right now.
I can understand it. I do. I, I understand all that. Honestly, it's what I expected. But eventually, it should come out.
Yes. And what the solicitor, and what the solicitor has just said, Mr. Moore, is something that we keep our promise. And as soon as we can, I will have Mr. Carr direct to the entire public.
We, the public will know because it's, we, we're doing this in the public interest, uh, to protect the, uh, the, this county. And every member of this board is, is, that vote two weeks ago was for that reason. And the public should know exactly why we took that vote. And so it will be made public. When we can, we will. And then you guys will make your own judgments, which I think you'll see, uh, why we took the action we did. To answer your question. So every one of these questions should be answered to some degree or can be said. So don't, you know, so if I could just bear your indulgence for a little bit longer, uh, and we're not talking a long time. We're just talking maybe a couple more meetings until our attorney is allowed to do what they have to do. And then we will tell you why we took the action we ta, we took, uh, and how, why, all the, how, why, all those questions could be, all the W's could be answered. It, it may never be answered fully, but at least you know the reasoning we see and then maybe answer your own question.
And in particular, I'd like to know what it cost us. Okay?
Uh, that, that is, yes. Yeah, we're still figuring that.
We're still paying for it. Put it this way.
Well, no, I understand. Well, then, then, then get the accounting out and, and make lists. Because we should know. And I'll be honest with you, I, I think we were screwed by somebody.
Oh, yeah?
And I'd love to know the name. I got an idea, but I'd love to know the name. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristy DiLeonardo and I am with Workforce Development. And if I may, I just wanted to give a little history about the Wawa program.
I know.
I was saying you were here.
Sorry, I did get it. I didn't hear you.
No worries.
Mr. Musso and Pearson did say, call your own.
Right. Um, I just wanted to wait for everybody else to speak. Um, so this Wawa program, it began in 2003 and it has been going strong ever since. It grows every single year. Um, we are working, Director, just to let you know, on having Wawa pay the full amount for the working, Director, just to let you know, on having Wawa pay the full amount for the buses. Currently, our Workforce Development Office pays for $60,000 of that larger amount, so we're slowly chipping away at it.
Good.
But I will share with you, so there's about 164 students currently that will be going down to the shore areas this year, and we're really excited for them, because what happens is, is when they get their paycheck, they come back to Cumberland County, and they put it back into our economy. So we're really excited and proud for this program. We want to continue this program. Frankly, the young people down at the shore, they don't need a job, and they're not working. But we are also helping our students, as I believe some of you all are aware, with some of the internship programs and the funding that the state government and the federal government have allowed us to be able to apply for. So we're really excited about it, and Wawa, we hope, will continue because they're a great partner for us. So I just wanted to mention that.
And Kristy, real quick.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I know you said in the past, too, sometimes when they come back, they get permanent jobs here at Wawa in our county.
So what happens, and if anybody is in education here, what happens is, is Wawa gives them the opportunity to be able to come back and apply an interview locally to the Wawa that are in their area and in their town. A majority of them do have that opportunity. Frankly, some of them, they just can't work during the school year because it's just too taxing on their schoolwork. But they do have that offer. So, I mean, I think it's a really great program for our youth here, so I just wanted to share the history.
I'm glad you did, because 2003 is when we were there on the board at the time that program started, and it was just a wonderful economic opportunity for a lot of kids from the area who would not have been employed had that program not been instituted. And yes, there are a lot of students that have had subsequently who have been hired by Wawa.
Correct.
And their managers, and they're going forward.
They are.
So it's a great program.
They are, and a lot of the students that actually reapply every single year, they are now the supervisors, which is great, so.
Kristy, my daughter-in-law just retired from Wawa, and she started on that program. And my daughter manages Maine and Landis, and she started on that program.
That's great. So it's a great story. It's a great story.
I support it.
I'm thankful so much. I've worked in the high schools here for the last decade, and I've seen every year, all of my students benefit from this, and any year after year, when they couldn't find local employment here, quite frankly. And it has been a great experience for them that they have done nothing but build on and bring back here to the county. So we're very thankful in the high schools, by the Millville and Bridgeton, for this program.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I heard, yeah, just, I ignore you, all right. All right, Ms. Ridgeway?
Good evening, everyone.
Need the microphone lowered?
Oh, I think I can manage.
Okay.
I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Township. We got a lot of new faces on this board. And I was at a meeting a couple weeks ago, and we were talking about county buildings, and I got home and I got to thinking about it. And it's been several years ago that the county made up a list of all the county properties that we own. And I think it would be a good idea if we made out a list again, so all of you can know all the properties that we own. Mr. Hall was just here. He spoke about a cement pad. And I've been tooting this ever since the cement pad just stopped. I really, truly believe that we should take the money, which I know we don't have the money, but we should try to consolidate all of our office buildings in one central location. And we could have made that jail on the cement pad and made a 12-story building. Bridgeton Fire Department can't handle 12 stories. And we could have had everything in a central location. And one politician, he told me, oh, well, that's not the right area. Excuse me, what area isn't, is there in Cumberland County that is the right area? And the only other thing I wanted to say that's really been bothering me is I believe that this is the start of my 16-year of coming to these meetings. And to sit there and hear some of you make remarks that it was somebody else, I wasn't here. I'm sorry. My door is always open. These are public meetings, and some of you are going to be leaving, some of you have enough, and I invite every one of you to come back and join me and make our government what it's supposed to be, for the people, by the people. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mantrahead. I'm from Bridgeton. I just have one question. The supplemental binder, is that available to the public?
Supplemental binder?
Yes, I guess it has the bills that were paid.
I mean, every bill is public.
Is it? But I just noticed it, because I didn't realize that they closed, there was a public portion to the resolutions. Until they closed, I'm like, wait a minute, what? There's a, I wanted to look at, see the bills, because that bill was in public, the bill that was paid. They said there was a supplemental binder. I just didn't know where it was.
I mean, if not, I can always email it to you. That's my problem, too.
Okay, cool. That sounds good.
Yeah, it's all public information, so you're welcome to it, so.
And I just didn't know where it was, because normally I know there's a lot of stuff in that package, and I didn't see anything in the packet. Unless I was looking.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You had a sweating, you had a sweating for a while. Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway.
Good evening. My name is Fred. I work for the Division of Social Services. I won't talk about our contract either, because I feel like it really will be resolved real soon, so I won't talk about that. I will talk about, however, like Jessica said, the disparity that's going on in our office. I am deeply concerned that we won't be ready for the economic downturn that's coming around the corner. I'm very concerned that we won't be ready for the citizens of Cumberland County. I'm concerned about Medicaid Department. We don't have enough employees there. I get tired of hearing administrators saying that we have more than enough staff. No, we don't. Our staff is steadily dwindling. As Jessica said, our staff is steady leaving. She's leaving. We just had a caseworker, a social service worker leave. Paige did an exit interview with her. We're down to four social workers in that department. I believe Cheryl just called for a test or whatever. I believe she did do that. I'm not exactly for sure, but I think she did. We have six people left on the one list. I don't understand why they haven't been hired to get that out the way and call for a new list. One can't be called until that list is gone and utilized. When we have six people on that list, and it's been sitting there, I don't understand why countless jobs are being called up on, yet no one is being promoted. I don't understand that. As Mantra said the last time we was here, we all interviewed for a position, and then you went another, then another direction, as is stated. I don't understand that, but we still only have one investigator. Our food stamp department, we're still short staff. People are steadily leaving our food stamp department. I don't understand how we are expected to do so much. We want to generate numbers, but we're not helping nobody. You get 1,000 people in the door, and you say, hey, that's great, but you're only able to help 100. And that math don't work out. If something needs to be done, either a round table, where there's worker, administrator, supervisor, so we all have people that have something on the table. If you don't have anything on the table, you don't have anything to lose. But if you've got something on the table, you've got everything to lose. You've got your reputation, your career. I say this all the time, every time I come up here. I have 5.3 years left, and then I'm leaving. I'm retiring. I would like to stay and see that out. I would like to stay to see the office be the office that I know it can be. Some people, we've been to funerals, buried some of our coworkers. We've celebrated our coworkers. We've celebrated birthdays, weddings. We don't do that anymore. And we need to get back to those times when we can talk with one another. We don't do it for fear of reprisal. People don't want to even speak. I guarantee you, get them in a room, and they don't, and they're not in fear that they might have a write-up or something, they'll sing. I'm a little different. I believe in truth over everything. Truth is the only thing that I understand, and the only thing that I know. I'm going to tell you the truth. I'm too old to get up and tell lies. I'm just too old for that, and I hope that we're all too old for that. Sometimes the truth hurts, but the conversation has to be had. I might not agree with everything you say, but I respect it. I know it's coming from a good place. And I hope you understand, when we come up here, we're coming from a good place. It's not just about money. It's about servicing our county, our citizens. But we must be made whole as well. You cannot have people serving our most low citizen, and he receiving benefits too. You can't have that neither. Most of them are leaving because the economic wage is so low. You try to figure out why so many people don't work in Cumberland County, you don't pay nothing. Now, I understand, that does not change, that's not going to change overnight, because you have to deal with the tax levy and all this other stuff. You could do it gradually, but that needs to happen. I've never seen so many jobs available in the county, in the county book. I've never seen so many. You ain't paying nothing. I was analyzing some of them compared to the state and other municipalities, not paying anything. And that's all I wanted to say, and I hope you really take a sincere look at what's going over at our agency. That's the most thing, this is the biggest reason I'm here tonight, to say that you need to wake up. It's a storm getting ready to come, and I hope we're prepared for it. I don't think we are. We can be, but it's just going to take some truth, and it's going to take some courage. Thank you. Have a good night.
Anyone else, sir? Okay, we're going to close the public session.
Do I have a motion and second?
Have a motion.
So moved. Second.
All favor?
Commissioner reports.
Do you want to start, Pearson, you're in. Loz, any commissioner reports?
Sure, and it was in reference to today, our Cumberland County Office Agent had our advisory meeting, and we did talk about it on one of the resolutions on the food, the farm market coupons. So today, what we learned is, in the past, we used to have like a coupon that we would give to anyone that applied and was accepted, and they would go to our local farmers and be able to spend $30. Well, one nice thing about it is the $30 has now increased to $50, so that's going to help, you know, our seniors and anybody that applies for this coupon, and it's also going to help our farmers. But the only thing that's changed this year, which everything changes, you know, technology and everything, instead of them coming in and getting, and, you know, they'll still go to Office of Agent and apply for it, but instead of getting the little coupon that they used to have in hand, now they're going to have a QR code. So my question during our conversation today was, you know, a lot of seniors don't use cell phones. They don't use computers or anything. So I know Barbara's here tonight. I saw her. So actually, our Office of Agents would actually help everybody. They're going to get it printout with the QR code so that they can take it to the farmer's market. And if they, the question was, if they lose that QR code, our Office of Agent Department will be able to go on the system to see what's available as a balance and help them. So it's going to change. It's going to take a little bit, you know, get used to that technology, but I know that department will do very well and help them. So I just wanted to give that a little update as we go. You know, again, $50 is a lot better than the $30, but they're changing from the actual coupons to QR codes.
Okay, I'll talk about the outcome of the veterans and the things that happened on the last commissioners' meeting. We approached Congressman Van Drew and to resurrect a old House Bill, House Bill 4982. And this House Bill was to basically pay some homage to the Vietnam veterans who have served and were exposed to Agent Orange. Well, after some deep discussion with the Veterans Affairs, Diana Pittman, myself, commissioners, we put together a very fancy letter over to the Congressman. And of course, us being close to Mr. Van Drew, we got very immediate response. He did not let us down. He resurrected another bill, House Bill. Actually, every two years it does expire, but this House Bill is now going to be presented to the Congress, and hopefully be passed. And it's basically not only helping the vets to be recognized with either a medal or a ribbon, but also other conflicts of other wars like Iraq and Afghanistan. And I think the commissioners should be proud of this, because those gentlemen, women, and ladies who served our military, and I want to thank Diana Pittman also, if you're listening, Director, she did its bang-up job of representing the other conflicts as well. And I think that this county has a lot to really be proud of when it comes to moving forward with that, this type of project. And hopefully, we'll see some more results, and it won't get just put on a shelf somewhere and thus collecting on it again. And also, one more thing, on the jail, we have been moving very, very slowly, because we're being very careful. But we are finding things that are discrepancies in the way the project went. And I don't want to say anything further, because we have to be careful, very careful, on how we move forward and how we decide to build something, if we should build it. That particular property on Buckshutam Road has, and I have, by the way, just to let you all know, I have construction background of 40 years in steel and other aspects of this industry. And we are noting that on that particular pad, there may be some discrepancies on the pad. So that may not be viable, it may be viable. So far, under inspection, it's been okay, but it's going to take further progress and further investigation to check these things out. So that's about as much as I can give you all now, and hopefully, that's going to be okay for the rest of you. So, thank you.
We hear your concerns, and we definitely, we, like, we want to come to a conclusion on a lot of these things. I feel like when all, I know my first meeting, and I was seeing all these attorneys' fees and things like that, I was shocked. You know, I live in Cumberland County, too. I choose to live here. I love living in this community. I just want you guys to know, we're, you don't see it up here, because we're just saying yes, but we are working behind the scenes to get things done. And, you know, I give you, I can give you my word that we're going to try to see what we can do, like with all of you workers that are up here tonight. We'll ask some questions, maybe, and we'll see what we can do. That's all, you know, I can say for now. But we hear you.
I don't have anything to say right now.
Okay, there are a lot of things going on, and I thank the commissioners, because they are working hard behind the scenes to make things happen. And they may not jump up and down about them, but they should be very proud of what they are working on. And I'll just point out, and the staff also, we are constantly, they get my phone calls all the time, and I got another idea, but just, I've attended the S, South Jersey Transportation Plan Organization. We have three projects. The Morse River Corridor we're looking at, which is... the Morse River Corridor we're looking at, which is, uh, developing the Morse River, the recreational side of it, the Cohance River Side, which I mentioned, but also they're gonna tackle, which I consider the number one economic project in the county, which is Nab Avenue. And why Nab Avenue? Because we have companies looking at the Millville Airport. Uh, the city of Millville is selling property, uh, their industrial park is almost filled, I think it's 97% full, and they're looking at additional spaces and they're looking on and off the airport grounds, working with the Delaware Bay Authority, which they, fact said they hadn't been spoken to in over 20 years. Uh, the city of Millville picked up the phone and just called them. And they said, we're, we're shocked. And, and now they are concluding in their talks and we, with Nab Avenue, many times these companies are looking, well, how do we get our trucks here? And Nab Avenue is the, a, the direct route from Sherman Avenue, from 55 Sherman Avenue, Nab Avenue, Buckshootum to the airport. It's the most direct way to get them off our, most of our streets and, and we're looking to develop that. Right now it's a six-year project, we're gonna try to shrink that as best we can and we'll work on it like we always do. We work hard to, to, uh, put things together. Uh, I want to commend Stan Fields because, uh, happily had a, uh, our first cybersecurity, uh, I'm not gonna know the acronym, so sorry, but you could stand up. Uh, him and, uh, Stan Field and his staff worked to put a group together to, uh, uh, to take all the professionals we have in this county in IT that usually work in their own silos, their own areas, and they talk, but now formalize that they actually, when a problem hits this county, you're working against a team, not just, not just one group protected there, reaching out to every other IT professional in this county and Salem, Matanda and Gloucester, because they see the potential. So I want to say Cumberland County is on the cusp, not behind, not, not following, they're ahead of the game. And actually the state people came down here, and I don't know that acronym either, but they were here to kick it off with us because they saw how important this was. And it's kind of nice that, you know, Cumberland County's the leader and other counties are looking at us. And I got to brag about that at our, uh, at our, uh, South Jersey, thanks, uh, which most of the commissioners were there, which was a, a good representation of our county to say we're moving forward. Um, and I thank you, so, um, and, and they have already come up with new ideas on additional stuff to tackle, uh, very, um, leading the way, which is great. Sorry, my hand ringing. Um, I, we, uh, we, I just want to announce that we're, our farmers, uh, we're gonna have in the Cumberland Mall, we're opening a farmer's market there and it's the local farmers gonna, and what, what makes that such a big deal? It's a big deal because we're, we're, the, it's a partnership between the mall, Cumberland Mall, and our local farmers to, to go into the mall and sell their goods. It, the, the tourism, uh, committee worked hard on this, uh, it's a, uh, to bring local goods into our mall, uh, I think, I don't know, it's every weekend, I'm, I'm not sure, it's every weekend they're gonna do that, but, um, uh, and the USDA, I just want to throw this out to this, farmers are thinking about, will supply, will give money to those farmers that develop their products. And I say, I'm thinking honey off the top of the bat, but there's other products they go, they will give money to do that, to help farmers bring their goods to market. Our, we had a, a meeting, uh, with the Sheriff's Department, which we didn't even know we had a problem, but, uh, we have a, uh, program that I think is a great program, which I didn't, uh, that I thought was being used, um, that, uh, it's called a Stolen, uh, it's our next generation 911 system. Talk about, uh, and there was a lot said, and we called a meeting right away, our business administrator, our assistant business administrator called a meeting right away, brought everybody in the room. I could not attend, I had to leave, I had work to do, but, and they brought everyone in the room to kind of hammer out how we can get this on track. I, I believe in not, not, just knowing the, uh, the little bits of it, is that we, we will work on this. There are things that are not perfect with it, but what I wanted to bring in mind is that all the people in the room were like, alright, let's figure it out, we'll figure it out, we'll solve the problem and we'll get this working. The system is good, the state police went away from it and they went back to it because that's how good a system is and we're using it. We spent a lot of money to have it and we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, take it and make it work. We, uh, I forgot the, the, we have also doing a transportation study. One of the things I guess I've said over and over again is I want, I would like bus system, a bus system or a trolley type of systems in different areas of this county. I, I never want to hear that we can't do something because people can't get there. And I, we were talking about adult trade, adult education as far as in the trades and identified a building that could host this and, 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 and if Miss, if Christie De Har is in the room, our first reaction, we looked at that Doug, no one could get there. I'm like, what? No one could get there? And it was at the airport and I go, that, that, that's insane that no one could get there. So the CATS buses, workforce development buses, uh, may be under one roof and whatever other bus line that we have may go under one roof and the idea is not that we don't cross tracks, we actually work together to run, uh, in, in whatever direction we're work, so we don't have, uh, issues of getting people. And I, we solved the issue last time, Commissioner Musso, about someone that had a job, was relying on the bus system and that bus lost their funding and it was called out and Commissioner Musso worked on it. And we had one of our CATS system, which was, I guess, a route pretty close to that, extend out to pick this person up, a person who wanted to work, wanted, needed the transportation to get to the job. So I, I would just like to do that, s, other areas and I was driving on, uh, uh, I was on Oak Road and I came up to the boulevard and I look over and there's, there's someone standing there, no, no bus, so all of a sudden he's flagging down a bus, which I know goes down the boulevard, I know goes down that route, that it always goes down the boulevard. If we run, people say, well, you can't run a route that direction. Well, if people know it's coming, they'll be there to get, to catch it when they need it. And so the, the, what's the old adage, if you build it, they will come? Yes, and they, and so if you, they know that route's gonna run and we can always make adjustments, we will. So the idea is to build routes, the lower part of our county needs it, people that don't have, in this economy, that if you ever look at a price of a used car, it, people are not gonna be able to afford that. Insurance in the state is outrageous, so more and more people are gonna depend it. Uh, Mr. Phillips knows that the, the people need transportation to get places. Uh, I would love our senior centers to be the focal point of getting people around to different places, uh, as an endpoint or a beginning point to our stores in our neighborhoods. So I, I kind of dwell on that because if I say it enough, people will kind of accept it that we're gonna do this no matter what, so I, I'll keep saying it till it gets done. And I know the commissioners believe, I hope, they believe that transportation is a key in this county.
Director, real quick, on our cop, um, meeting today, Barbara did give a little bit of, 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 saying that they go, that survey goes till March 31st. And right now, um, there's about 1,200 good responses from that survey, so as we get that information, Barbara Natahan will be providing that to you. So I think that's great, 1,200 good responses. Um, around 2,500 surveys, but 1,200 of them were good responses.
That, that's awesome, so, so something we could tackle and it'll be, um, um... Sorry, I don't want to make sure I forget stuff, this is, uh... And, and, Mr. Ridgeway, it, it's, it's kind of obvious what you say, it's not obvious, but putting people together breaks down a lot, helps with communication. It's not something that goes on deaf ears in my head that, uh, that pulling people together, different parts of our county government together. Uh, just right now, we can't afford a gigantic building, doesn't mean they're not, I like empty buildings, buildings that are built well, uh, that could be repurposed. Uh, there are buildings out there that can be done and, and if I feel, if it's the right fit for us, uh, and, uh, we will, uh, consolidate our departments to help with spacing because we have space issues in this county. Uh, I don't understand why we're all spread out. Hopefully by being together, we can collaborate better because we're one office down or one floor below and helps the communication and then also helps for our people to find us, where we're at, to deal with us. So it's not, uh, doesn't not fall on deaf ears, but I do, and I want to say this, I think this board has been the most transparent board I've ever seen, even, even the council that I sat on, I, and I hope you would agree that not only do we roll camera, but we're trying to answer questions the best we can, uh, and trying to focus on what we do so people understand we're not perfect, but, but we're, we're trying to tackle issues. The social service, we understand as a major part of this county and, uh, and we have good liaisons that will, were happy to listen, that they, they, uh, uh, it's something they do the best, both of them, and that they were willing to listen and to make that, uh, the camaraderie amongst the Division of Social Service better. They're not gonna be able to do that, but they could set up the circumstances to happen so the people there can make that a better environment to work in. I hope you see we've tried, we're trying also, uh, that, you know, we don't have a contract yet, but we're trying, uh, of both sides. But, uh, um, again, it's a building that we, we're not in all the time, you guys are in that building, so, uh, but we'll work on the circumstances. We talked about security not too long ago and places that nine, that their phones can be answered, I thought that was tackled right away when we did, because we were, we didn't even know about it until it was, you guys told us that and I thought we've made some contacts. I hope the problem's been solved. Then that's good, that, I, I, and I don't know that, that's good that we want to know that, so, and actually we have a landlord and we will happily, so.
It's an IT issue that is being resolved, it don't happen overnight, working with a vendor, working with my IT people.
Okay.
It, it is, it just.
That, that's fine, that's fine.
It's overnight.
That's fine, and actually, uh, just letting them know that, and I guess, that come up, so I guess they understood where we're at, which is good. Communication works, so, uh, all right, I didn't mean to go on, uh, is there anything I missed, uh, Ms. Vasco? Okay, see, I always look at the, Lucy usually tells me where I'm at, so, uh, so, okay, do I get a motion?
Do we have a motion in second to adjourn?
Do we have a motion in second to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
7:53.
Thank you.